Let's get right into public comment and items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation, interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. We do have some speaker cards. And what I'll do is call your name and call the one right after you so we can get a little line going here. And I want to, if some people came in late, please fill out a speaker card if you'd like to address the council. This is public comment.
So you're not calling first?
Yeah.
No, so this is public comment. I'll call you first.
Okay. Steve on Linden. Can we, uh, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Is that all right, or do you want a portable?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, good.
My name is Steve Gortorama and I live, I live in Linden Avenue. I would like to speak on behalf of a vulnerable, of a very vulnerable segment of our community. As someone who is disabled and permanently in a wheelchair, there are two issues which affect me. One is the lack of parking enforcement. Two, the need of a cannabis dispensary in the city of San Bruno. Early this year, I voiced my concerns with the lack of ADA access curb on the corner of San Felipe and Linden Avenue. Vice Mayor Marty Medina and City Councilor and City Manager Connie Jackson have assured me that something will be done. For now, traffic, traffic, for now, traffic parking enforcement has placed warning notices on vehicles blocking the sidewalk. My vehicle has a disabled license plate. It does not block the sidewalk. It is not an obstacle. People can walk on the sidewalk. As you can see, I'm in a wheelchair and I find myself scared trying to go around vehicles that are completely blocking the sidewalk. Let's stop giving out warnings and start handing out tickets to anyone that completely blocks the sidewalks. The second issue I would like to address is the lack of medical cannabis dispensary in the city of San Bruno. Many veterans, senior citizens, disabled, and hard-working Americans have pain. I prefer to be, I prefer to be a productive member of society and not be debilitated by doctor-prescribed narcotic drugs. Please start to consider medical cannabis dispensary businesses. Currently, I have to travel outside of San Bruno or have it delivered. Travel costs and delivery fees add up and it becomes a financial hardship. Please consider the tax revenue a medical cannabis dispensary can contribute to San Bruno. Let's make sure we keep San Bruno safe, clean, accessible for everyone equally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next, next speaker is, I believe it's Raina from Florida Avenue. And after Raina, we'll hear from Stephen Seymour.
My name is Raina and I live on Florida Avenue. I want to address three main issue. The lack of lighting is one on Taylor from El Camino to Florida, Taylor and San Anselmo in Florida. That's one issue. Second issue is illegal parking. And thank you, Steve, for bringing this up. We should be introduced because I, we also have that same issue on Florida. It's parking, people park on the sidewalk. And I have a friend who's also disabled. And my mother also, when she visit, we, when we walk, we have to go on the street with my friend and pushing the wheelchair because all these cars are parked, blocked right on the sidewalk. We have contacted the police department and I guess that issue has not been remedied yet. Second issue is the illegal dumping on basically Huntington, Florida, everywhere. How do I learn this? It's because I walk twice a day in San Bruno. I walk Bowie, my four-legged kid, dog. Okay. And I carry a plastic bag with me and I usually gloves to put garbage that I manage to pick up. So I look like a Santa Claus almost every day with the garbage. Because I, we just moved, it's going to be two and a half years for us, my husband and I, to move here. But I, we're here to stay and I want to be, I want to have a clean San Bruno. So I want to be part of this solution and how to remedy this issue. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Stephen and Scott Newiger.
Before I start, I did ask whether or not, because I think this ties into what Steve and Raina both said, whether or not I could put a floppy disk in so I could put some pictures up of some of what they just discussed and what I would like to discuss right now. Not a floppy, but whatever you call this thing. Is there some way to hook it in like the other speakers did? I realize I'm not on the agenda, but it would be helpful, I think, to the discussion.
Steve can do it. You still only get three minutes, Steve.
As long as you don't steal what, that from my three minutes.
Carol, would you push that timer button?
I haven't started yet.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's not moving.
Steve?
Thank you so much, Carol.
Could you raise the microphone?
Yes.
That'll be, thank you.
You're welcome. And I don't, I had brought copies for you all, but if we get it up here on the screen, I don't think.
Okay, wait a minute, we'll see. We can get it, get it up there for you.
There might be a couple of files on there, just so I can help you out. Not those pictures, there's a couple of files. If you look at the, there should be five files on there. And one says City Council, 1213. Yeah, if that's not going to work, then the only thing we maybe can do is, if you can't open it on there, is just put that one photo that you just had up. I'll just talk to that photo. If council members would like, I can give you, and Mayor, I can give you a copy that you guys can share as I move on. I only got two. All right, if you want to start it. Okay, thank you, Carol. All right, I don't, okay. So I think the only thing we're going to get up there is a picture of the Salvation Army, which is on Mastic Street, which is near where I live. But you have some paperwork and I'll follow along. Okay, so this is the Salvation Army. The pictures that are in the paperwork that I gave you now were taken today, just so, in reference, I want you to understand that. The things that I'd like to discuss is the epidemic in dumping and the parking epidemic, mostly on the flatlands, but I mean, it exists elsewhere in San Bruno as well. I'd also like to talk about, talk to the council about putting some program together so that if we bring something to your attention, that, like what South San Francisco has, they have an app where if you key into the app and you bring something to the attention of the police or the city manager, that a case is, you're assigned a case number and then you have to work through that issue and you get some kind of resolution back. Because the way we're doing it now, that doesn't happen and it's very frustrating. The pictures that you have show Dante right here cleaning up downtown, some pretty large garbage that we don't think should be there as a community. And the next one is a picture that was taken today at 2:39 Georgia, 2:45 PM, another dumping site from today. And then at the Ichiban parking lot on Mastic, there was dumping. Some of that has been there for, I'd say, a week or more. And we've reported that site, but no one's cleaned it up. At 55 Mastic, this is a dumping site in the city that happens all the time. I need to move quick, so I'm not going to, I see I've got a minute nineteen left. San Felipe today at 188, the city came out and cleaned up a dump site, but right across the street, there was another dump site. And it didn't get cleaned up. I stood there, watched probably 12 trucks go up and down San Felipe and none of them stopped. City trucks, white trucks. The dumping epidemic, the current affair is that we, basically, we call you, you let us, you tell us you're gonna, or we send you an email and you tell us that you're going to come out and fix it. Usually, we have to send three, four emails or text messages to get somebody to come out and fix a dump site on the east side right now. We also have an epidemic in parking and that was just talked about by the two folks before me. But we think that the only way you're going to fix it is if you start to take a strong hand with those, not the warning, but take a strong hand so that we don't have people blocking sidewalks. What I'm doing is requesting a community impact study to be convenient to find a solution to our dumping and parking crisis. I want this to be placed on the city's agenda and for us to collectively build a long-term plan to address these issues. What we are currently doing is not working. I would rather spend time helping to resolve this crisis rather than wasting time with emails and phone calls daily that will not lead to a real long-term solution. And that's what I'm requesting from the city council and the mayor.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Now Scott, then Tim O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Scott Newiger. I live on Linden Avenue and I'm here to back up what Steve Seymour just said. It's very important that we all understand that we live in this community, that we drive by, at least I drive by every single day, cars that are illegally parked on lawns and red zones at night, every night, every, every night just about across the street from Cilias is a car parked in the red. Every single night. I always look at that thing saying, if that was a $50 fine, we could create some kids' activities with that money that we were getting for the city. Instead, all we do is see policemen drive up and down the streets and don't do anything about it. So I suggest that we also look at the streets that parallel the El Camino Real and realize that people come to the airport, park their cars for days at a time, leave them on our streets, and we don't have any room to park our own cars anyway, which, by the way, the streets are not marked anywhere. There's room for three cars, one car can take three car spots, and that's it. And there's nothing that anybody can do about it. A lot of these cars have driveways that they don't use themselves. So I think that it's important that we start straightening out the parking situation and not drive by with no, with no penalty for doing these wrong things all the time. People are parked on their lawns every single day. Cops drive by, not a ticket, I don't know whose responsibility it is. But why do we have to respond, why do we have to always respond to these guys or ask them to do it when they can see it every day, driving down the street themselves? There's shit all over, pardon my language, there's stuff all over the place, they don't do anything about it. There's no line that says, hey, I'm a policeman or I'm a city worker or something, there's something wrong over there, I'm going to report it. They don't do that. They just let it sit there and go on. And I think it's time that we stop, stop that, get some more surveillance cameras in the community and see who's making the problems and then charge them for making the problems, penalize them for making the problems, take that money, put it to good use for San Bruno citizens that deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim O'Brien, then Doe on Linden.
Good evening, and my name is Tim O'Brien. I live on Florida Avenue. And I have a concern about Huntington Avenue. It's a big, long street and it gets abused. I see speeders and just flying down the street, especially from Sylvan to my street, which is Florida. And I'm hoping that a stop sign, an intersection be there, be considered to slow the people down, to make it a safe area for everybody to enjoy. And that's one other thing. And another thing is speed bumps in the neighborhood, like on Florida, San Anselmo, Taylor, you know, put in to slow people down. They're just flying by, they forget that they're in the neighborhood, that there's kids walking around, people walking their dogs, their four-legged kids. And just, I'd like to see something done. And for city officials to come out and see what's going on, open their eyes, and just to see what we're witnessing. And for them to act and have something done so we can have a safer San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. Doe, then Sandra Perez-Vargas.
Okay, hi, I'm Doe Newiger. I have lived in this community with my husband, Scott, for 34 years. We live on Linden, the 100 block. And we like our home, obviously, and I think San Bruno is a nice place to live. However, I feel that it is lacking in terms of being a more, take, we're not taking advantage of really developing our city in a way that would make it more attractive and beautiful and a place where people would want to live. For example, downtown is really not a destination place. We have a Starbucks there, we have a Tuva, and then we have a lot of businesses there that are maybe questionable to some extent. And I look at South San Francisco, our neighbor to the north, and they have recently revitalized their downtown area. And it is a place where you can walk around and you can, you can experience different things. And I wonder why we're losing that opportunity. So, and we look at, I'm a teacher in Millbrae and the Millbrae community, all these communities, if you've lived in, on the peninsula over your lives, have been pretty much very homogeneous. But they're differentiating themselves and they're really taking advantage of the possibilities that their communities offer. And I don't feel that that's really happening. I'm disappointed that we have codes on the books and they're not really being enforced. And I don't know, I'm happy to know that there are a couple new police officers that were recently hired and I really appreciate the fellow on Nextdoor who posts Sergeant Ryan, who posts things. But we need more visibility and I'd like to see more progress as we go forward in the future to make this a better place to live.
Thank you. Sandra, then Bridget.
Hi, we know each other. Sandra Perez-Vargas, I'm on the 200 block of Mastic Avenue.
Carol.
I've lived by the Salvation Army for 22 years. And I called the city hall, somebody says it's going to get taken care of, they sweep it up for a day or two and it goes back to this. Today was clean, I'm happy. Tomorrow, who knows? I've been talking to the city that I do not want my block to turn into Huntington. And over the 20 years, it's just built, the layer goes up, mechanics are openly working on their cars on sidewalks, the oil is leaking, there's cut glass, they're parking out three feet into the street, which is no pleasure for Steve, for me, once in a while I can't walk because I have also a disability. It's no fun to go around a car to find another car coming straight at you. And I'm not sure what it takes. I mean, how many times do I have to call about the same addresses? There's no system in place to say, we're going to follow this? Health Department, you call in, they know the restaurant, they give you a claim number forever after, you go back to that. Now it's, oh, your neighbor said they're not doing it, case closed. A week later, your neighbor said they're not doing it, case closed. Meanwhile, we have litter all over our neighborhood, which we pick up. And I think it's embarrassing that senior citizens and council members and children who are nine years old are cleaning the streets. Surely, if we don't have more money, surely, members can double task. Tell them, if you can't pick it up because your truck is full, call it in. Maybe the guy behind you can. But to think that that, and even worse around the corner, could block a whole sidewalk into the street and people are just driving by it from the city? Code enforcement went out to a dumping site yesterday and I thought, great, they're out there. The first time I called, guess what? They didn't pick it up. They picked it up today, the whole street was blocked. We're seeing rodents in our neighborhoods. We're seeing people who are afraid to report their neighbors because you address a concern and they tell you to go F yourself, which is not very nice. That discourages it. And when we've called the police for assistance, not recently, but in the past, they've told our neighbors that we've called. And these are valid safety concerns. And we just want a plan, something progressive, something where we don't have to go into city hall and fill out a form. And we would like to be addressed when we walk into the city hall. We want to be acknowledged, not put off like we always have. It's not a nice way to be treated in our neighborhood. And we're doing our part. We would like to see the city do more. And I don't think I need any more time than that. And we all know each other and you see me out there. You know I want the best for the city. And I've reached out to all of you to help. And hopefully, we're going to see some changes. Because I want the merchants on San Mateo Avenue to get more clients. I have my hairdresser there, optometrist, dentist, I do all my business there, my dry cleaner. A lot of people won't venture out because it's filth. But I'm not going to abandon the people who've served me all these years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bridget, then Carolyn, living good.
Hi, my name is Bridget Mollatesta and I live on Florida Avenue. I think that some of the problem with Florida and Huntington is the Caltrans construction storage. And I think that that storage across the street has left the area in disarray. During our neighborhood watch meeting, the police chief said that a clean environment reduces crime. However, we do have a parking issue there. Some neighbors have a total of 17 cars, plus they bring their big trucks and they park them overnight. And then they leave at 7:45 in the morning before the parking enforcement kicks in gear. We have garbage thrown out. I've seen people drive past my house and just throw their garbage from their cars in big bags onto the side where Huntington is, where the old parking lot used to be for Caltrans that they built there. The beauty of the area, so this is storage for Caltrans. So the trees died, there's been animals left to decompose there, it was a possum specifically, and there's feces left on the side of the road. The crime has increased, trucks have been stolen, neighbors' trucks have been stolen. There was a car set on fire at 1 o'clock in the morning. So we were awoken with, stop, please! And then to look outside, and then there was a car burning across the street a little ways down. Just on Friday, I called about a domestic violence incident and the police came and they did a really great job. But two people were stopped in front of the house screaming and yelling and the woman was saying, I'm not going to get in the car with you so that, what, you could do, you can choke me? And then she ended up getting in the car. So I mean, this is like the screaming, yelling environment that I live in. And really, I think the crux of the issue is this storage, that storage that Caltrans has put in place of the trees, of the area that we used to have. It's ridiculous. So, that's it. Thanks.
Carolyn, then Calista.
Carolyn, living good, Cheryl Drive. Well, I've lived here 54 years and I almost want to cry tonight because finally, I'm being vindicated. I've been complaining about some of these very things or similar things since I've lived here because I was involved in our homeowners association. I have emails back 20 years that can prove things I've complained about, that they have nothing done about them. And tonight, I'm down here because I'm going to throw in another complaint. I recently tried to get out and help a little bit clean up the downtown on a Sunday, volunteering with a bunch of other people. And I know Marty was walking with me, so I'm sure he can attest to this. I couldn't believe some of the things I saw, but one that really got me was the newspaper racks over by, in front of West Coast Cafe. That rack, those racks are a mess. I, and this is not just in San Bruno. I was in front of a cafe over at Burlingame Plaza. They too have wrecked racks. I don't understand why we're putting up with that. Why aren't these newspapers, and I worked for one for, well, two, for 40 years, why are they allowed to come into our city and leave things in such ugly disrepair? Why aren't we going after them? Why aren't we joining throughout the county, the other cities? I believe in numbers can be impressive. Why aren't the other cities also complaining? Maybe they'd listen if 21 cities or 22 we got in this county would band together and say, we're tired of it. And I, Salvation Army, I've seen what they're talking about, the gentleman here, I've seen that many times. The dump there, I've seen the abuse of double parking to the point of a possibility of accidents in the 400 block on San Mateo Avenue. I could go on. It's not just my neighborhood. I just recently complained about something on September 21st online. I have my ID number, et cetera. I still got the problem. It, nothing's, they say they lost it. That's always what I hear, something's lost. I'm lost too. Thank you.
Thank you. Calista, then Maria Berry.
Good evening, council, staff, neighbors. My name is Calista Shepherd. I prepare a statement. My husband and I live on the 400 block of Poplar in Huntington Park. If my name rings a bell, it's probably because you recognize it because I've been emailing, knocking on doors, calling. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to you because I'm sure the first impression was one of a primal scream. And I don't want to leave that with you because we're going to be needing to work together. And I just want to assure you, the reason I'm here tonight and talking to you is because I am voicing our collective dismay and community-wide opposition to the proposed Victory Honda five-story car dealership project, which is located in El Camino, in our community heart. So, since we're going to be meeting each other, I'm sure over this long process of review, I just wanted to reintroduce myself and make sure that you understand that we are committed to our new and revitalized San Bruno as set forth in the vision framework of our transit corridor plan, which was adopted in 2013. So my husband's grandmother, Nana, lived on Poplar since the late 60s. This was one of her stomping grounds. My husband and I have had the house now since 2000. And he uses Caltrain twice a week to commute to his job. I'm a member of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce. We use Caltrain, BART, and share ride services and we walk as often as we can. I'm a member, oh, sorry, said that. For my work, I'm largely car-dependent. I drive a hybrid. I'm a residential real estate sales professional and it's not unusual for me to have multiple stops a day. My sales office is in San Francisco. I often, I sell San Bruno. I bring clients who are ready and willing to leave the city because they're priced out and frankly, they, I show them to a community that they have not considered. And I'm very proud of San Bruno and they're generally very impressed with the community that we've built, et cetera. Which leads me back to this proposed project, which is like fingernails on a chalkboard. Let me see. My father was an architect designer, senior partner in a 35-person firm specializing in multifamily and continuum of care developments. And his firm was responsible for developing over 35,000 units in his time. So my husband and I were very interested and excited at the prospect of improving our community heart, our main street, our village center in San Bruno. I'm sure everybody recognizes this, fantastic. We were really thrilled with the community-wide stakeholder conversations that we all had spanning many years to develop our transit corridor plan. And correspondingly, the measure N, which voters approved in 2014, to allow height increases in these areas so that we could flesh out that vision and plan, that gained our approval. We voted for this. We participated, we voted, we're excited. And we're like, yeah, let's have a pedestrian-friendly village. That would be fantastic. Mixed-use developments, bring housing over commercial, retail, bring it all close in to basically our community and regional assets of Caltrain and BART primarily.
You're going to have to wrap it up here pretty quick.
Okay. Long story short, we will support projects that comport with that vision. The development planning department right now has many projects on there and most of them are like, hey, that's great, that's what we voted for. This Victory Honda, it doesn't comport. So I hope when you are going through this review process, and I understand that they have every right to be reviewed. have every right to be reviewed, I hope you will take heart and make the right decision, prioritizing the community vision for San Bruno and not allow this to go forward. And thank you for taking my comments tonight. I'm sure there will be many other opportunities that we'll have to speak and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Maria.
And I'm also going to be speaking to the Victory Honda dealership.
A little closer, Maria.
Sorry. Okay. My name is Maria and in 2001, my husband and I moved to Linden Avenue in San Bruno and we soon fell in love with our house, our neighbors in San Bruno. While I understood that moving near a Honda dealership, that I was moving near a Honda dealership and all that it entails, I also trusted that the dealership owners and the city of San Bruno would work together to be sure that the business of the dealership would be conducted in a manner that would be responsible and respectful to the residents of San Bruno. Unfortunately, I was sorely mistaken. It's been a frustrating experience, to say the least. The dealership does not care about San Bruno, least of all its residents. They care only about doing what is best for them. They are not interested in solving the problems that are so easily fixable. On numerous occasions, I've suggested that they use cell phones or walkie-talkies. I teach in San Bruno, that's what we do at our school so that we don't disturb the neighbors. I've mentioned it to the city and to Honda and they don't care. The paging system is used constantly, excessively, in my opinion. They cause noise pollution in the neighborhood. But again, Victory Honda does what is best and easiest for Victory Honda because they don't care. For years now, instead of parking where they are supposed to, employees park in front of my home almost daily. When my stepfather was going through chemo, he'd have to park, you know, down the street and I'd have to go pick him up because he couldn't walk to my house, even though I called and asked them to move their cars. This continued, I'm so frustrated. Also, not only do the employees park near my home, they park their Victory Honda cars as well, because you can tell by the stickers. I go and I talk to them, I talk to the manager, I always start with nice, they don't care. Garbage blowing onto my street and front yard from dumpsters that are not supposed to be there and yes, have been moved recently, again, but it's back and forth. Car alarms going off all day and all night. City codes have been written and ignored. It's lip service and this has been happening for years. Furthermore, I'm worried about all the pollution that the proposed Honda building will add. If they're going to be working on all these cars, where are the vents for the fumes from all the carbon monoxide going to be going towards my house? I wonder. Who will monitor this? Where will all the toxic chemicals be stored? You're close to a school, we've got Allen Elementary around the corner. What happens if there's a spill or an accident? Now they want to increase their building to mammoth proportions. Yes, they may behave for a while like they've done in the past, when I've come to the meetings and spoken about all this before, and then things get better for a little while, but once they get what they want, history has shown that they will go right back into their inconsiderate and selfish behavior. I implore you to allow this to not happen and stick to the plan of improving our neighborhood with mixed-use buildings to house people and useful businesses. Okay, I'm almost done. And a building also of this size and type and location will be a horrible eyesore for generations to come. Please bring our residential neighborhood to the next level by carefully choosing businesses that add charm and character that is conducive to family living.
Thank you. All right, anything else under public comment? Okay, we're really precluded from doing a long discussion on this and we're not going to get into that, but I just wanted to make a few points. You have some very valid concerns. They're the same concerns that we have and we haven't been aggressive enough. I think this warrants a subcommittee to work with staff very aggressively to see what we can do to get this moving. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Ibera and Councilmember O'Connell to that. Irene is up and down the avenue probably more than any of us, so I think she realizes what's going on there. If they'd be willing to serve, I'd appreciate that. And then, knowing full well, with all of the emails back and forth the last couple of weeks, that we were going to have a discussion tonight, I asked staff to get me just a couple of points that, it's all not doom and gloom, I just want you to know some of the things that are going on and have gone on in what we consider the east side of the flat part of our city. It's a very, very old part of the city and we have a definite parking problem, no doubt about it. You know, when this city was established, we've had people with one car that actually parked in a garage, now they have three or four, but no more streets and no more garages. It's a very, very difficult situation, so we have that to tackle and we are working on that. But, Florida Avenue, first new park in the city, over three decades on the east side. Investment over $1 million from the city to purchase the property and prove it with an additional $200,000 from our San Bruno Community Foundation. The project was deliberately initiated by the city council to improve and expand park and open space opportunities for residents in the east side neighborhoods. Lions Field Turf, first and only installation of all-weather artificial turf on a city field to improve the sports activity experience and expand residents' ability to use this field. Over $1 million, city money invested in this project. Infrastructure replacements, that's going to be a nice impact on everyone in this city, but primarily on the east side. Mastic Avenue, $1,560,000. Kane Sewer Relief, $130,000. Kane-San Mateo Avenue Sewer Bypass, $1,400,000. Under Design, San Mateo Avenue Sewer and Water Replacement Project, $3.5 million. Avenues 1-1, 1-2 Sewer Replacement Project, $10,600,000. La Mida Sewer Pump Station, $1,500,000. San Antonio, $1 million. Over $3 million invested to date in projects that have been completed in recent years and over $16 million in projects in design and $7 million in projects in the planning phase. Planning, we have avenues 1 through 3, Sewer Replacement Project, again, almost $7 million. Those are all in the planning stages or being done. After-school Recreation Program at Bel Air, the first after-school recreation program site at Bel Air School was established by the city to provide support to families and children. Mosaic mural of public art, the city's largest and most prominent installation of public art in the community to provide an inviting and beautiful relocated Posey Park in conjunction with the great separation. And, as was mentioned by a number of people, the Transit Corridor Plan, our Measure N. Long-term, comprehensive vision for redevelopment transformation of the downtown and the El Camino Real corridor to support community vitality and economic growth and improvement to the overall east side part of our community and its core business area. The plan envisioned as being implemented to attract and invest hundreds of millions in new buildings, infrastructure, business development, and housing in the corridor. So, I try to step back and look at the bigger picture, although, as I've told staff for many years, it's the little things that really matter to a lot of the residents.
I'm not a little thing.
Well, they, they, they're not little things and I don't mean to minimize it, but let me finish, let me finish here, all right? It's a smaller, we can't hear you, all right? We can't hear you.
The reason you put the money into the infrastructure now is because the problem with the infrastructure, it was left unrepared long.
Well, and then, and, and, yeah, I don't want to get on a back and forth, but, you know, a lot of people complained about it because we did raise water and sewer rates to get this done. So, we're doing a lot here in the city. I just want you to know that there's a lot of stuff happening in the city overall and a lot of it is happening on the flatlands of the east side. A lot of it, frankly, because it's older than a lot of the rest of the city and it's, it is what it is. But, we, I've appointed this subcommittee, we've heard your concerns tonight, you know, they don't fall on deaf ears, believe me. So, no, that, that's it, we're done with public, no, we're done with public comment tonight, we're not going to get in back and forth. So, we've heard your comments, I've appointed a subcommittee, you will see much more aggressive action, you will see much more aggressive action by this, by this council, all right? Thank you very much.
You've appointed, look on the other side, put them on the east side. Why is it marginal? They have the best interest of the market.
I have appointed Mr. Ibera and Mrs. O'Connell, all right? And we'll see how that goes. It should go very well. So, thank you very much for your comments. They don't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
How long are we going to give them before something's...
They haven't even met, all right? They haven't met, so let's, no, we're not, we're not going to get into a big discussion tonight. I overstep my bounds by really talking to you about any of these items because we're really not supposed to. So, I thank you very much for your reconsideration tonight and you will see some results. No, we, no more discussion, thank you very much. We're going to, no more, no more questions, no more discussion, we're getting right into conduct of business, item number 10. All right, thank you. Thank you.
You know, I didn't make it run because I don't like these things, public speaking.
Well, you're doing it right now.
Does Bernie, like, Bernie's up here.
You're doing, we are on cable TV and nobody can hear you.
You say, little thing, you called, you said, that you have a staff, they went on, 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 boring us the desk, I'm sorry.
We are on cable TV.
You're called a ghetto now here. You know that when I have visitors, I send them through Millbrae Avenue.
Good.
I'm embarrassed about San Bruno Avenue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I've lived here since 1994.
Thank you very much.
Then you minimize our concerns.
You know, nobody's hearing you.
Oh, of course, we're not very, of course.
Nobody's hearing you.
I thought it might, we give you a raise for everything you've done for us, then you can hear us, right?
No, no. I don't know where...
Before I say something else, this is why I don't come to these meetings, because I am a hot-blooded Mexican, okay?
It's fine.
But these are valid concerns and I'm...
They are valid.
...a bunch of, you know, what?
They are valid.
Well, if I was doing anything for him, Marty, I'm sorry, I haven't mentioned yet, but he's the only one and we're getting him for because the next door neighbor...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, all right.